No, stand for the pledge, everyone. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I don't, I'm guessing there's not any public discussion, everyone's here for budget conversation, right? Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, minute?
Just the agenda.
Okay. Motion, we have a second, okay? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Alright, now we can get into some discussion here. Anyone in particular wanna take anything off? Roger.
We're starting reading terms.
Yeah, I mean.
According to me, we're twelve point six percent over what we did last year, unclaimed this year, so we're gonna have to address something. Doug's got it. Spreadsheet he's gonna show us?
Um, I guess I don't know what you would like, um, I brought along my information.
Okay, thank you. I don't know where we want to start.
Uh, I guess things were presented and, um, typically, we, uh, the board, the Cassuth County Board of Supervisors determines a contribution figure to the self-insurance fund. Passed out information as far as balances, um, history, I do have some information. If the board would like of, from the Cassuth, or from the Iowa County Engineers Association Service Bureau, this would be secondary road, uh, benefits as far as health insurance is concerned, um, individual premium, family premium, deductibles for individual family, um, what the county, what percentage the county pays of both the individual and the county. I have not verified this, there are some problems with it. Tammy, I think I gave you my copy.
Oh, sorry, I wrote on it, sorry Doug.
Sorry, no, just let me.
This would be last, yeah, last year's information.
This is current, what is current.
This is current, okay, yes.
Um, if you look at sheet two of four, Harrison County, uh, individual premium, it says zero dollars. I'm making an assumption that that's not correct. Johnson County, for the year, says their individual premium is eighty seven, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty cents, and their family premium is two thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. Again, I don't believe that's correct for, this should be yearly. Uh, if I find these types of things, I, I usually call the county engineer to see what's going on. I'm making an assumption. If you multiply those by twelve, you will actually get what the individual and the family are. Cassuth County's highlighted, uh, for your information, Sack County, same thing as Johnson, uh, they have seven hundred forty-six, sixty-two, and eight, one thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Uh, for the premium, Story County the same way, Taylor County the same way. I can only make assumptions, I don't know what those figures really mean. If you look at the county, family, county percent contribution, wriggled, it says zero. So I have no idea what that means, I would have to call and make, uh, make some sort of contact and see. So, all the counties are listed, uh, the high, I got that on the last page, four of four, I got the, I call it wage because I have wage information on there as well. But the high individual premium, uh, for the year is twenty-one thousand eight hundred three dollars and sixty cents. The low is at zero, uh, which, again, I don't believe that's correct. The average is ten thousand one hundred seventy dollars and sixty cents, and the median is ten thousand three hundred eight dollars. Family premium, the high is thirty-four thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and ninety-six cents per year. The low, again, is showing is zero, um, again, I don't believe that's correct, but the average is twenty-two thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and six cents. The median is twenty-three thousand four hundred forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. The deductibles, uh, are listed there, again, the zeros, I, I cannot, uh, I cannot, uh, I, I, I would have to ask questions, see what's going on. Uh, there's a, there's a hundred and seven, there's one in the individual county percent, where they provide a hundred and seven percent, uh, of their individual county.
Looks like that's Jefferson.
Yeah. So I, I don't know which one it is, to be honest with you, I didn't look. Uh, I looked for zeros there, I did not look for, it had a, a number in there. In the family, the high is a hundred, the average is eighty percent. Uh, counties on average provide eighty percent of the family. Just for your information.
If I.
This column is what the county pays, correct, not the, not.
No, that is what it costs. So if the county pays a hundred percent of it, they are paying that much. If the county pays eighty percent of it, the employee pays twenty percent of it.
Of that total.
Yeah, the, the premium is the premium.
I looked at Wright's yesterday and theirs was twenty-two, six ninety-two.
This is. Yeah, I don't know, this is from the Iowa County Engineers Association Service Bureau, this is that source, so.
So I was just assuming that, he said they had a two hundred dollar premium to every family plan, so if you add that in, it would make sense, but it doesn't make sense the way it's grown.
I would have to, I would have to verify that, you know, that, this is all data that was just downloaded from the County Engineers Service Bureau. A lot of things I will go and talk with other county engineers to try to explain some of that.
So Doug, if I'm reading this correctly, Cassuth County is below the average individual and family premium?
Yes. Our, right now, our contribution to the fund is for a single is seven hundred sixty-five dollars, and for a family, eighteen eighty-five per month. And when you multiply it by twelve, that's nine thousand one hundred eighty dollars, uh, per year, and twenty-two thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, so yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I guess I can certainly email that to anybody that would need it. Just call me, email me, I'll reply back. And by the way, I guess I just wanna say too, uh, I am the only person in the county engineer's office today, due to meetings and some vacation, but I'd like to thank Tammy Christie from the auditor's office is answering the phone and in our office, so thank you Tammy for helping out, appreciate that.
So on the information you passed out, we're about twelve point six percent short.
Depending on.
How you look at it.
Yeah, depending on how you look at it, I like, I like to talk in terms of fund balance. And currently, uh, this fiscal year, um, we are, we have a fund balance currently of two million nine hundred sixty thousand nine hundred, two million nine hundred sixty thousand nine hundred fifty dollars and four cents. Uh, the balance has changed in six months, uh, two hundred nine, a negative two hundred ninety-five thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety-four cents. So our balance has been reduced by that, which, uh, is about nine percent. Getting near ten percent, if we continue throughout the, uh, the year that way, our ending balance is going to be, uh, two million six, if, if we just would double that, that's as of December thirty-one. If we would double that, our ending balance is gonna be two million six hundred sixty-five thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars and ten cents. Uh, using what Wellmark expects, uh, Cassuth County to pay, that balance would be reduced eight hundred seven thousand, uh, seven dollars.
From today?
Uh, at the end of this fiscal year, if, if we would have what is expected, what Wellmark last year gave us as expected cost with our, our insurance plan. And that would leave us with two point four, uh, two million four hundred forty-nine thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Wellmark, just to review, uh, they had an expected cost this year with the very same plan that we have. Uh, they expected expenses of three million nine hundred twenty-one thousand two hundred four dollars. And our estimated liability to our fund is four million four hundred forty-nine thousand one hundred twenty-four. That's what the plan that we have right now. So, depending on what our expenses are, our contributions, we have administrative costs, administrative costs that we're gonna pay no matter what, is estimated at one million eight hundred nine thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars. And our contribution to the fund right now, this fiscal year, is estimated, it was budgeted at two million five hundred forty-six thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
Doug, do you have the, um, like electronic file for this spreadsheet for last year on your computer yet? Or is this data overwritten into the same program?
I believe I have PDF of it.
Would you be able to send that to me? I was looking for my copy the other day and I couldn't find it.
You want that now, or?
If you have it handy, that'd be great, I'll pull it up on the computer, otherwise, if it needs to be later, that's fine. Was that yours from last year, Doug?
Yes. I got a snapshot from. I don't like throwing things away.
Yeah, well, I'm pretty sure I kept mine, I just, I didn't find it in the file in here, it might be somewhere else, but I didn't find it.
Is that dated in the lower right-hand corner of April twenty-five, twenty twenty-three?
The date in the lower corner here is two sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Um, so you might have a little bit farther out on the timeline there, but that's okay.
Okay.
Um, what this shows for Wellmark's projection last year, if we used a hundred percent of expenses, we would have gone down to two point eight million fund balance. So their projection with a hundred percent would bring us about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars lower than that this year. But for starting balance, July one, twenty-two, we were three point three seven two million. This one for July first, twenty-three, we're at three point two five six, so we're about a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and twenty thousand.
One hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars and four cents. We've lost.
Yep.
Last, in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yep.
Three point four four percent.
The other thing I was looking at here was, um, like the claims per month, I know some people do more towards the end of the year, if they've got their deductible met, all that sort of stuff, and we had we had negatives for the entire fiscal year, but last year we had, the first three months were positive, and the first three months listed here, July, August, September, were positive, and then the next four were negative, increasing as they, as we went on in time to the end of the year.
We don't have too much positive this year.
Well, there's no, Josh, do you want this back, you wanna look at it? Thank you.
Okay.
Um, I guess one of the things I did look at, we had a lengthy conversation last year about stop loss and making changes to that. Um, I think that's in my papers here.
You want to see that too?
I know it's, um.
Summary here?
Yeah.
Yep.
Based on what they gave us here, um, on Tuesday, by my calculations, if we had increased the stop loss to fifty thousand, we would have spent an additional hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and this is all rounding here, um, but if we, based on their, their prices, they quoted us, if we had made that change, we would have saved a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, so pretty close to a thirty thousand dollar extra cost we would have had if we would have changed stop loss.
Um, you're talking about the past, or are you talking about the future?
I'm talking about last year's numbers.
Well, last year's numbers, it's, last year's numbers are last year's numbers, and we, we have more employees, uh, the underwriters at Wellmark, they look at the condition of our, it's not just employees, we, we have three hundred people, over three hundred people that are insured. So, you gotta, at this point, please don't look in the past and look to the future. We gotta, we gotta do something to make sure that our self-insurance fund stays viable. I hope that that's a goal here today, I sincerely hope so, since two thousand.
I don't, I don't think it's.
Five, two thousand six. Cassuth County has saved a lot of money.
Doug, I don't think it's fair to make the accusation that I'm not trying to keep this fund viable by stating the facts of what happened last year.
I, the facts are here, what's happening right now, that's what the costs are.
The facts are also here, and in every other.
No, those, those are not facts, those are not facts. That's what the underwriters estimate.
No, this is not, this is the high-cost claimant summary of what we have actually had. This is not an accusation.
Okay, but when you start looking, when you start looking at what they give us for what we, what they feel we should be contributing to our fund, that is all estimated projections, the fact, yes, we have high cost, high cost claimants. They list that.
Yep.
Okay.
I, I'm not dis, I'm not disagreeing with that.
The fact is also that if you look at this over a year, we have lost two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, because we are not putting in enough money, we're not contributing enough money to cover our cost. We're using our balance to contribute our cost. The question has always been, since two thousand two thousand nine, two thousand ten, when, when we did a reduction, what is the, what is the appropriate balance, that's always been a question, and it's been unanswered.
Mm-hmm.
It's been unanswered, because we don't know.
Kyle, we, we have to start someplace.
And what we have to do today is not look at what our high-cost, cost claimants were a year ago. We have to look at what's going on with our fund and figure out what we're gonna do. That should be, that should be the goal for today.
I, I don't, I don't need instructions on what the goal should be.
Okay, good enough.
Um, I'm, I'm looking at the facts and the information. And, yes, that question of what our fund balance should be has, has been a question, has been unanswered, I've asked that myself multiple times. Um, so.
But where do you wanna start? At some point, we have to decide what your fund balance should be, and then you have to decide how to get the fund balance there. So if you don't start with the fund balance, we're, we're gonna be in the middle of everything, not knowing where we're going.
My point with, with these remarks and the numbers was we had a lengthy discussion last year with a focus on changing stop loss. The fact of the matter is, if we had done that, we would have gone down an additional thirty thousand.
I'm not arguing that point with you at all, I'm just saying, we don't start with the fund balance, we don't know where we're going.
I guess I, I disagree with that statement.
How?
Because you don't know what, yes, you had high, you, you have high costing, they project fund balances, and we don't, if you look over the years, in column, well.
I, I'm not.
There, there, what we paid for actual claims, plus the administrative fees, is not exactly what they project them to be, what they estimate them to be. So to make a statement like that is not true, that's just, you're, you're taking, you're taking one bit of information and saying it's fact, but it ends up being what happened the next twelve months.
But, we are comparing the information that we were given, we've got, we've got this quote summary, we're supposed to make an informed decision off of six options that were, or possibilities, stay with the current, make some changes on five other options. And I'm comparing to the options we had last year with what actually happened, and how that would have impacted our current situation, I'm not saying we don't need to make changes, I agree with that. Um, but, I don't think the stop loss piece of the equation is going to be a benefit to our insurance fund. I don't think changing that is going to be a benefit right now, we haven't proven that with a situation.
So I haven't even gotten to the point of thinking about the stop loss yet, I wanna know what we're gonna have in the reserve to keep our insurance viable, and now I'll talk about stop loss.
Well, I mean, we, we've got, we've got options with same exact current plan, current with changing stop loss to forty and fifty thousand, different options with deductible, what, same as what we had for, um, stop loss, and then stop loss at forty and fifty, forty-five thousand.
Looking at this.
I mean.
I got it somewhere, but it don't move the needle to the pen where we're gonna make up twelve percent.
I agree, but.
So why don't we start and figure out what our ending balance that we anticipate what we want, and then go and go through all the other scenarios and figure out what we want?
Well, that was, that was the piece of the equation I was able to do the most calculations on so far. Um.
But it's not gonna fix the problem, Kyle, don't matter what.
Well, we need to figure out where we're going here, to figure out what we need to have here in the fund balance.
Yeah, in, in, in some regards, it plays in both directions, because if you don't know which option or which plan you're gonna go with, you have to kinda know that before you set your rates, because your rates are gonna be different depending on each plan.
Well, your rates are a reflection of what you want for a fund balance in the end. I mean, we could not raise the rates and just spend the fund balance down to zero.
True. I'm not suggesting that.
I'm not either, but where do you want the fund balance, and now I'll talk about what we're gonna do to the side here.
Well, I guess in in the, in the history that is on here, and I'm sure some of you would know, if not all of you in the room, there have been years we've gone up, there's years we've gone down, um, the, the magic question is, where do we want the fund balance to be, and how much of a contribution, um, do we want to figure to get there?
But you also gotta take into account, we added how many people into the plan last year, and that has an effect on what the fund balance is. We have more.
Yeah.
People under the umbrella.
Not necessarily, I, I.
Really?
You.
You know, it, it depends on how healthy people are, that's what it comes down to.
Yeah.
How healthy are the people that are insured? And how many people are the stop, how many people the stop, over the stop loss is being covered? Because that turns into an administrative cost.
You're also, I mean, you're working at how healthy people are, and you're also needing to take into account incidents and unforeseen expenses too.
If tomorrow, while I'm driving, uh, I get into an automobile accident and I become, uh, uh,
Double amputated.
Paralyzed.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Or knee.
Severely injured in any form.
Uh, I will become.
Yeah.
An expensive member of our health insurance.
And if you, if you add ten members and they never go to the hospital or doctor in any form, it, it helps the fund balance. If, if you add ten and every one of them goes over the stop loss, it hurts, it's just the balancing of of life. It's just the balancing of, of life and that.
Reality, what we need is that crystal ball, but.
Yeah, whenever.
No one's made one yet, so.
I guess I've, I don't, I mean, this whole summary gives us a couple other options as far as, um, stop loss and deductible and their potential impacts.
This is one that I was kinda questioning. That second to last one. Yes, it'd be increasing our stop loss by five thousand. But overall, I mean, only increasing it by five thousand versus going up to fifty thousand.
Well, have, have you done the math on what that would have, like a situation?
Not yet, but that was one thing that I was questioning is if that, you know, if we go with that option. Um, if that helps that we can kind of figure out a direction so then we can figure out what we're gonna do with our fund balance.
Doug.
What, I guess, may I ask a question?
Yes.
What is the math? Uh, isn't the math on the sheet that was provided? Or is there more, is there more calculations that are going on, I guess? I, I'm not aware of those calculations.
I guess I told you the calculations I did.
Based on last year's?
Based on our actual usage of the plan. Yes, I realize it's last year's data, but what else are you going off?
Underwriters have provided to the board supervisors what their estimates are and the cost to the funds. The cost, not to the fund, but the cost for that insurance. And I would ask you to please put your faith in the underwriters for that, for that answer. Please.
Doug, how many times in the last ten years have the underwriters' projections been accurate for our actual numbers?
They, I had a Wellmark, a Wellmark representative tell me one time, if we were purchasing this insurance from Wellmark, we would be using the, for a premium, we would be using the estimated maximum liability, maximum aggregate stop loss, that would be the fund. He was an underwriter and his job was to tell Wellmark what was going on. Now, Wellmark makes money administratively. Please take into consideration another thing. If, if the contribution to the fund is greater than our cost, it stays in the fund. It does not go to another administrator. It does not go to Wellmark. It doesn't go to any kind of a, an insurance agent. They're giving us estimates. They, we, the last two years have not been covering our costs.
That's not true. Year before, we had a positive twenty-two, eight thirty-six point zero six.
Okay, the last year in hand. This fiscal year.
And the year before that, we added four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars to the fund balance.
And why aren't we, so then why all of a sudden are we, last year did we not, did, did we end up with, uh, not covering our expenses? Because we didn't contribute enough money. And that's fine. We lost on our balance. Great, we had a balance, we had a balance to cover us.
I, I think that's the whole point of the fund. It's not to bring it down to zero, but we have a negative hundred and fifteen for this last year's total. Positive twenty-two thousand the year before, positive four hundred and sixty-nine thousand the year before, positive a hundred and sixty-eight thousand the year before, negative one ninety-five, positive seventy-four, negative one seventy-two, negative two oh eight, positive ninety-four. I mean, I could go on for another six, eight years.
The fact of the matter is, our fund balance ended last year. Our auditor's balance ended June, the end of June of twenty twenty-three, our balance was three million, two hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. The previous year, it ended three million, three hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars and two cents. Today, we said at the end of December of two million, nine hundred thousand, nine hundred sixty thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars and four cents. My math, my calculations show that that's a reduction. Whether you start talking about what happened in fiscal year twenty twelve, that doesn't have anything to do with what's going on in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And if we're here to make a decision, I can try to project a balance for you based on what Wellmark has provided. And if you wanna go with your calculations, that's fine as well. Just tell me what the contributions per, the contribution for a family, the contribution for a single is, and that, that's really what needs to be done.
Well, I guess you said to put our faith in Wellmark's underwriters and I, I guess, I think the majority of the history, if we had followed exactly what they had said, we would be substantially over what our actual costs have been. We've had years that have been over. Uh, we've been within a five hundred thousand dollar range of three million dollars for a fund balance for the last ten years.
I've never, when I said put your faith in the underwriters, I am not saying use their dollars. But look at our fund and see what's going on there. We, we built a fund balance because we did contribute what Wellmark was telling us to do. That's how we contributed upon, that's how we attained the fund balance twenty years ago. Now, again, in two thousand eleven, fiscal year two thousand eleven, the board decided we have a large enough balance. They reduced the contribution by fifteen percent. And then they increased them the next couple of years, four percent, five percent, six percent. The balance started growing again. Two thousand sixteen, zero percent increase, seventeen, three percent. Then in eighteen, all of a sudden, well, we gotta increase that eleven percent. Then six percent, then twenty percent, ten percent, la- uh, twenty twenty-two was zero percent. Because of the contributions, yeah, sometimes you have a balance. Okay, if you have a balance, use it the next year.
And we have.
We can no longer use a balance. That is what I, my concern is, our balance has been reduced. We cannot cover, continue covering at a rate of.
So the magic question that we were talking about of what the fund balance should be still has.
We've never raised our rates, Kyle, to what they recommended.
Uh, yeah.
In the history of that I've sat here, we've never, we've always found the middle ground to try and keep it solid.
Yup.
So that's my point. What, what's that number today?
I would agree and that's my intention as well.
I mean, the worst thing we can do is not have a solvent insurance program. That's not fair to everybody that works third time.
So, does anyone have ideas on where we should be for a fund balance then?
Why, you shouldn't be below three million for that in the end. That's my uneducated guess, because that's what it is.
That's kind of the number I was coming to.
And, and that's the number we've been, we've been within a five hundred thousand dollar range for the last ten years.
The tissue are projected to go maybe eight hundred thousand more. So what are you gonna do?
Well.
Yeah, but that's simple math.
But do you have that other, what was the number I read off before for the last year's one? Was it two point eight million we were projected to be at based on the hundred percent?
I don't know if that was based on the hundred percent or based on our contribution.
Based on, based on the hundred percent of expenses, we were expected to be at two point eight million for June thirty, twenty twenty-three. We actually ended with three point two million. So we were seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher than that hundred percent line.
Which is, was, is not unusual. That's how balances grow. And the good thing about it, again, I'll repeat it. Instead of an insurance agent or an insurance company keeping that seven hundred thousand dollars, Cassup County has it and it's in their balance.
Yeah, and I have no issue with that. Um, but if we, if we go off that line and say we're, say we're expecting an eight hundred thousand dollar loss, we expected a six hundred thousand dollar loss, five hundred seventy thousand dollar loss last year with the exact same line.
Okay, so what, what is your expectation on, on the future cost? Um.
I would expect to be somewhere in the middle of where we're at versus the projection. I don't think, I.
No, the, what do you expect? I mean, given what Wellmark provided to us, we know there's administrative fees and we know that that is two million, one hundred eleven thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars. That's gonna be a cost. That administrative fee is, is there.
That doesn't change till the fiscal year, correct?
We're talking about, we're talking about funds beginning July one of twenty twenty-four.
But that's when those rates change.
That is correct. And that's what I, I guess I thought that's what we're talking about today.
That is, but.
And so then what is your, what do you wanna budget for, for the costs? Wellmark's underwriters says our expected cost, they estimated at one million, eight hundred nine thousand, five hundred twenty-two dollars. You wanna use something different. What is that number?
Don't believe that's what I said.
Well, you just said that you're not, Wellmark is estimating too high. So somehow you've got to, I guess you gotta provide a number. You gotta use, when you look at a, a budget, you've got to see what your expenses are. That's what you gotta determine. And if, if you can, I can certainly put some numbers into a spreadsheet and if you, if you wanna put it in there and then if you wanna say, then we'll change some contributions, I will estimate some balances.
So with our stop loss, I think this other one I'm looking at is what we went with. Um, looks like their numbers for stop loss are going up about seven hundred thousand dollars.
Seven hundred eighty, I think my number come up with once. Somewhere, I don't know if I, the final. I did the math once and I thought it was seven eighty.
There, the fixed cost review for twenty twenty-four, they're expecting seven one of twenty twenty-four of twenty point ninety-three percent increase based on the very same thing with Martin. It's going up from nine hundred fifty-one dollars, eighty-nine cents per insurance policy, one million, or one thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars.
But the total change of twenty point one percent or twenty-one, twenty-one percent.
Right. But even if we keep it at three million as a benchmark, we're not increasing the rates by twenty-one percent. You're way down there in the five percent, four percent range.
For, for contribution increase?
Right. It's a goal. I mean, someplace, we're gonna have to figure out what, what's eligible and what isn't.
Yeah, I, I think increasing the contribution is.
Well, we're gonna have to increase the contribution. There's no.
Yeah.
No getting around that.
But how much?
Here's our magic number. What do you want for a fund balance at the end?
And where's your crystal ball to tell you what's gonna happen?
Nobody's got a crystal ball, but I mean, you say they're, they're probably smarter than we are looking into the future. I have no idea. They know past claims and how much of them are gonna be probably into next years because diseases tend to carry over.
Well, and, and we've had some individual situations that are not ongoing forever too, but, um, that have been high cost claimants and have impacted the financial picture here, but.
Well, I went through the high claims, the first, out of the first page, half of them are gonna carry over. Pure and simple. There's no doubt about it. Second page.
Well, and that's, that's where the cost.
Second page, probably not as many. But to be fair, half of the high ones are gonna carry over.
Yeah, there's always that chance that you could end up having more.
Yeah.
New diseases crop up, new accidents, issues. Again, need the crystal ball. Either way, I think we need to have a fund balance like you said, the three million. How do we get there?
Ball, ballpark, yeah.
That's the nightmare among fund balances, uncomfortable.
I mean, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with much of that. It's just how we get there. Seven sixty-five.
I'm sorry, that was seven hundred and ten thousand that I came up with. That would've been short.
So if you do five percent on seven sixty-five for the single, that would bring it to eight oh three. So, I mean, ballpark eight hundred for a single with a five percent increase. Feel it that way. Eighteen. Eighteen eighty-five times five percent would be nineteen seventy-nine. So, two thousand.
Do six point, do six point three. That's kinda in the middle of where they're projecting or I'm projecting.
Six point three percent?
Increase.
Well, that'd be, for a family, that'd be two thousand and three dollars, point seven five five. So, still at two thousand. Um, seven sixty-five would go to eight thirteen point two. So that'd be a, a fifty dollar increase per month for single. But their, their suggested is eleven sixty-two.
I'll just say a six point three percent increase to current contributions. Using what they are using for our estimated healthcare, our, our costs. The total revenue would be two million, seven hundred. The total revenue would be two million seven hundred thirty-seven thousand fourteen dollars and fifty-four cents. And the expenses would be three million nine hundred fifty-one thousand two hundred four dollars. And that would give us, uh, if you subtract, uh, subtract expenses from revenue. That would mean you'd need to one million two hundred fourteen thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. To pay the bills. And that's not growing a balance.
What number for expected claims are you using? Like which, which sheet is that from?
That's using our current.
Using your spreadsheet.
Well, that's using self-funded initial renewal rates. You've got the bullet five hundred, that's what we're given from Michelle. I'm using. Two million one hundred eleven thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars. Which is what they expect for claims. I'm using one million eight hundred nine thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars, which is our administrative cost. So just adding those two together, that's three million nine hundred twenty-one thousand two hundred four dollars. Now, again, you gotta use something for an estimated cost. And that's, you gotta have something, an expenditure that you're gonna use. If you're not gonna use. What they're giving, I mean, if you wanna reduce that, I'll put it in. I, I have a spreadsheet, but if you, if you wanna get your three million dollar balance. You're gonna have to do something to. One, take care of the costs that we're gonna have and two. Add on to it for whatever we're short from three million dollars from this fiscal year. Does, I mean, does that make sense to you?
That makes sense. Doug, what happens if we raise the deductible? Can you put that in your spreadsheet?
Well, which I can put in, using the group quote summaries.
Right.
I can put in some values that they provide. Yes. Which, uh.
Well.
I mean.
We went to fifty hundred and three thousand deductible and raised the stop loss to forty-five thousand. What does it come out to?
So. The administration on that. I'm looking at. If you're looking at this, are you looking at this sheet?
Yes.
The. One thousand, two thousand deductible, fifteen hundred, uh, three thousand out-of-pocket maximum. With. The thirty-five thousand stop loss, or all we're doing is just raising the deductible. So. The estimated suggestion. I need to look at a different sheet. So your expected claims then will be reduced.
Right.
To. To million nine thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars. The administration stays the same. So you end up the difference between two million, uh. The two million, uh. Nine thousand compared to the two million one hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred thirty-six. And based on that and using six point three percent increase. I'd estimate the ending balance or, uh, the revenue. Minus expenditures at one million and negative one million one hundred twelve thousand fifty-six dollars and forty-six cents.
Doesn't fix it.
We've put ourselves into a pretty good hole. But if you're gonna dig out, you're gonna have to put a contribution towards it.
Wow, that. That also adds the other ten thousand dollars in liability for the stop loss.
He didn't calculate.
No, that.
He calculated stop loss as the same.
I thought you were doing the far right column.
No, he, he.
Okay, yeah.
Just to increase deductible.
Your, did stop loss is a two-way sword. It can, can make you money, it can cost you money, so.
Did you ask them about any higher deductible options than what's listed here?
I did not. What is, I mean, if you were, if you remember correctly. Michelle, the industry for stop loss said seventy-five thousand dollars.
Do we have that as a comparison?
Didn't ask for it. I can certainly do it. I provided.
I have heard of some others that are going to hire deductible plans to get the premium down. And then offering the deductible reimbursement to cover back and get it reasonable for employees. On the backend and I, I mean.
My, my issue with too high deductible is it's a burden on the employees if they get sick. That they'll never meet because you get a five thousand dollar deductible to an employee. That's a tough, tough deal.
May I make a statement to that? Um, Kasut County in the past has. Had highly deductible plans and has reimbursed deductible.
And, yeah.
That was done. It was done by the office manager of the Kasut County Engineers Office. So if the board is thinking about doing that, you also need to have somebody that's gonna administer that.
You got a minute, Doug? What happens if you punch in the twelve point saves? Increase.
It's not enough, in my opinion.
Yeah.
To the, to the point of the high.
With the same deductible that we were just talking about and a twelve percent, twelve point six percent, your.
Raise the deductible to what you did on the last scenario. Would you have where it's at?
Yeah, I am. I mean, maybe not the same.
Do we wanna see what it would be with the forty-five thousand stop loss?
We have, uh, estimated expenditures nine hundred fifty-one thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars greater than revenue.
To the point of a higher deductible with, uh, reimbursement. On the executive summary, the claims paid by range in the current period, seventy-two percent of the members had no claims. Or claims less than twenty-five hundred dollars. So. To the majority. There could be no difference. If we get a significant savings, that could be something and then we could reimburse it back down to a. Reasonable dollar and you'd only have the liability of the ones that actually crossed that threshold.
I, I think it was said that twelve percent of our insured people actually. Are, would be affected by that de- increase of deductible. And the, okay, so I'm just gonna play devil's advocate. And, and I'm not saying that's not a good idea, but who are you gonna have do that work? May I ask?
I would say we'd have. Couple months, we'd have to figure that out.
Well, I would figure that out before you tell everybody you're gonna do it, I guess, if it was me. And I was, if it comes back to me. I. I, I don't know.
You're gonna have to make determinations on what's dealt and what's not in that.
Correct. You gotta, you gotta look at it. You gotta verify that, yes, it is a deductible. You gotta verify that. Uh, they have accumulated that much deductible. There's, it takes time. I'm familiar with it because again. Our office manager and the Kasut County Engineers Office did that work. He stepped up because it was good for the county.
Well, it'd probably be good to see, see numbers and see options of what impact that would even make if we. Looked at something.
Well, you can see some deductible reimbursements, I think, on this sheet.
Yeah.
Um.
Right about in the middle or left side.
Column A B.
Yep.
So you can see what was being done. I mean, you can budget for it.
Was, what was our reimbursement at those times? Was that five fund or was it?
I believe what we had is, uh, the policy was five hundred for single and thousand for deductible. And I believe we reimbursed back to two hundred and fifty. Well, excuse me. We had, at one time we had a two hundred and fifty and a five hundred. We increased it, then we started that deductible reimbursement. To go back to the two hundred and fifty five hundred, if I remember correctly.
I, that does sound right.
It's hard to catch up.
Yeah, really. What happens if you add twenty-five percent to it, Doug?
Then you'll start getting there.
It's a bite.
At least I, what I was using. With twenty-five percent. Your estimated expenditures are. Six hundred thirty-five thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars. Now, you start thinking and hoping that your expenditures aren't gonna be as great as what. You're using for an expenditure, but you gotta budget for something. And with that, at least if we had a catastrophic event, uh, we're getting to the point where we can cover it for a year. Catastrophic event meaning the hundred twenty-five percent maximum liability to our fund. That's just for a year, not multiple.
Your, your premium base is still in line with a whole bunch of the other counties even though it's terrible. Gosh, I don't know what you think, but I think our insurance is why we have good employees.
I would agree with that.
Good thing.
And handicap, handicaps and the state.
Doug, would you be able to ask for some comparisons with, um, seventy-five thousand dollar stop loss? And then, um, if we kept the thirty-five thousand, just one with like current, but going to seventy-five thousand. Everything staying the same with going to seventy-five thousand stop loss.
No adjustment to deductible?
Not on that one. And then another option with deductible going to. Five thousand for single and ten thousand for family. And the same stop loss.
Stop loss seventy-five thousand.
No, thirty-five thousand stop loss. But a higher deductible.
Deductible, single.
Five thousand. And ten thousand for family.
Do you want an out-of-pocket maximum?
Um. Probably, is that double what the deductible is right now?
You can have whatever you want. They can provide.
Could we do the same number for?
Yeah, probably.
The liability and the out-of-pocket maximum would be the same thing?
Yeah, dude, yeah, that'd be fine.
But you're still gonna spend money because people that need their deductibles, you're talking about reimbursing it through the county. Those dollars are gonna come out of the same fund.
But it'd be, it'd be us paying for our people versus them planning to pay for it.
I don't think in the end your dollars are gonna be pretty close to the same.
That's why I'm asking for the numbers. And then, then another one with that same, same stuff as the last, except a seventy-five thousand dollar stop loss instead of thirty-five.
So five thousand and ten thousand.
So three options, one comparing stop loss going up, one comparing deductible going up. And the other comparing stop loss and deductible going up.
An out-of-pocket maximum staying, just the same as the deductible?
Yep.
I can get those. I don't think it'd take very long.
Okay, that'd be great. If you, if you're able to get answers yet today, we could maybe come back to the topic. If you, if she can respond that fast, I don't know. I don't know how fast we'll get them, but.
Yeah, I, I have no idea.
But I.
And I have. Three other budgets that need to be discussed as well, so it may not, my time may not be there also.
Well, if, if you could send her an email or whatever, call her to get her working on that if possible, that'd be.
I will.
That'd be great. Any other thoughts or anything else you guys have for things to look at for options?
Well. Even if we go to high deductible, you're paying back, you're still gonna, in the end, you're, you're not gonna use to save millions of dollars. Because you're gonna have people that are gonna have claims.
No, we're still gonna have to do.
Well, one of, one of Doug's points previously, and it was in regards to the stop loss. But I think maybe deductible would be a different avenue to get to the same point is. If, if we bet on ourselves versus betting on paying them the administrative fee. And if we can, depending on where the numbers come. depending on where the numbers come in, if, if we can do a higher deductible plan and reimburse that down to keep, keep it um from being a huge impact that way, then we would bet on ourselves for that lower portion that Wellmark wouldn't have any liability then, so our prices should come down.
Who takes the exposure? Kusuth County does.
We would take the exposure on the lower end, but it's seventy.
And the higher end too, you'd take the exposure on the.
Depends, that's why I asked for three different, but that's why I asked for three options.
But you do, you look at where your claimants are and I think there were claimants that were uh not quite to forty thousand dollars. Well, we're, yeah, well, you're paying for stop loss. Of thirty-five thousand, you're paying for insurance to insure those people, so does that cost of that insurance? Is it greater than actually paying for their healthcare costs? Up to that forty thousand, forty-five thousand, that is.
And.
That's something that, that's how we, that's how we were able to get a balance also. Ten, ten fifteen years ago. I mean, I I'm not gonna. I I know there are people in Kusuth County who were born the same time as I was, which is nineteen sixty-three, and their parents tell me that they went to the hospital, had a baby, the wife's, the mother stayed in the hospital and their insurance bill was hundreds of dollars, less than five hundred dollars. Unfortunately, that's not the way it is anymore. And we have parents here, they, that have had children, we have grandparents that have had grandchildren. They can speak to this, that, you know what, I don't know, Josh, you just had a baby, do you know what the cost of it was?
Well.
The delivery, I'm, I'm assuming everything went just straightforward, there's no, I, I don't know, I honestly. But I, I would guess it's over ten thousand.
It could have been, but we did not go to the hospital for it, so.
Oh, okay, well then.
To save on that.
Well, thank you.
Save, save the tax.
Chris, you're the next, Derek, I don't know if you guys remember when your children were born, what cost?
Lots.
So.
It was over ten thousand.
I could have, in the last fifteen years. I mean, in.
Ended up at the C sector and it was twelve hundred and twenty thousand.
So. Unfortunately.
My first one was four hundred and fifty.
Well, here's.
Insurance, it was four hundred and fifty.
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think anyone disagrees that we have a lot higher costs today than ten, fifteen years ago, that's a given. The and, and the reason I did the math with going to fifty thousand like we were looking at last year is because we have numbers that were, are actuals in that case, but if you look at seventy-five thousand as a stop loss and, and that's just say, not saying changing stop loss is always not going to be positive, it depends on what you're going to, I don't think fifty thousand is a benefit to us. But there for last year's situation, I don't think it would have been, but if you look at seventy-five thousand, we would have six individuals from the last last year that would have crossed that threshold. You have five pages, but I think it's forty, forty-two individuals that were over ten thousand. So if you had that as going from their deductible to um stop loss. If we had their deductible being ten thousand for a family, we would be assuming the lower end of the healthcare costs, not the high end of the healthcare costs.
But then you're assuming that you can administrate the insurance someone here in the county cheaper than what Blue Cross Blue Shield can.
Well, they're making a profit.
It's not necessarily administration, it, because they, they are doing the administration, they send us a bill and we pay it. You know, um, they don't send us every, well.
They don't send you a itemized per sure.
Look at all those reports that we get once a month. I suppose you could, you could go through and find out exactly what every person's cost that was turned into Wellmark.
I don't think that's an aggregate report. And I, but I've never bothered to look either, because I think that's kind of the case.
I am not, I, I trust Wellmark that they're doing what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, I mean, they're all, I'm assuming your reports have a scrambled ID just like these do, so.
Oh, I'm, those scrambled IDs don't mean nothing to me, I'm just, I, I don't doubt that there are two or three people that are not, that are receiving a lot of healthcare right now.
Yeah.
I cannot doubt that, I know, I know the people are.
And, and that's where I think if we see some numbers for those examples, I think that would maybe give us more insight for
I can, I can do some work, I mean, if you want to know what it's gonna take estimated cost and get a three million dollar balance, I'll tell you what it's gonna take for contributions. You're not gonna like that answer.
Well, but then you go back to their, their estimates of.
Well, do you wanna use seventy-five percent of their estimate?
Wow.
Do you wanna use eighty percent of their estimate? I can, I can figure that up as well.
I'd rather look at those.
I have a spreadsheet here that all it takes is you guys ask the question, I'll try and give you an estimate and I'll get.
Do any of, Josh or Roger, do you have any other scenarios you would like Doug to run? Or ask Michelle for in that regard, besides the three that I laid out?
Well, we go back to, there's no secrets. There's gonna be that many health claims and whether we have a high deductible and we reimburse it through the county or we have Blue Cross Blue Shield pay it, the dollars are the same, I don't think you're gonna save a ton of money.
I don't know that it will be and you can't, you can't know that until you get a quote from them.
But at least if you do save money, it stays here, Kusuth County, it stays in the fund balance. That statement may be true, but if you don't, if there's not a need to spend that money, at least it stays in the fund balance.
And I think those, those scenarios I asked for would give us some more options to look at for other avenues to.
What's your projection on what you want for an annual, pardon me, a monthly premium for a family and a monthly premium for a single?
I, I wouldn't even take a shot in the dark at that until I get those other goals.
Well, you gotta have some idea where you wanna be on a monthly premium.
I don't know that they're going down anywhere, but I mean.
How much more do you, i- is acceptable to you?
I couldn't put a figure on that right now.
Well, you're gonna have to, because in the end, that's what it's gonna come to.
No, I'm asking for more information.
You're still gonna have to know what's acceptable for a rate. Whether you have the county pay it, whether you have the individuals pay a little bit of it, you still gotta know what's acceptable for a rate.
But the rate is only one piece of the equation, you gotta have your, your costs figured into the other side to get your.
That's how you get your rate, isn't it?
But if we look at other options, if we chose another option, your, your cost would be different on the backside.
I'd go to your scenario, go to a five thousand dollar deductible. The insurance company gives us all kinds of information on what it costs and what it's gonna cost. Okay, your, your scenario says you're gonna save a whole bunch of money to go on a high deductible. I'm gonna say you're gonna save a minuscule amount because you're gonna have to pay those same people on a high deductible.
But seventy-two percent of our members spent less than twenty-five hundred dollars.
And seventy-two percent will continue to pay less, but it's the fifty people that went over on this report that are still gonna go over, that's just a fact.
But that's where you sh- you would shift liability from Wellmark to Kusuth, to Kusuth County Health Insurance Fund. And, and we should get a reduction in our prices because of that.
It won't be a reduction because you're still paying the money out.
We may.
You, you don't know that answer until you get a quote, that's my point.
No, you don't know your answer until, until a year later when you're, when you're actually going.
True, but that applies to everything.
You can't estimate it better until you have a quote.
I'm gonna say insurance companies aren't dumb, they go through hundreds of scenarios and they have figured out just much better than what we can.
Well, I'm not gonna say they're dumb either, but I think we've we've been on the wrong side of their expectations for the last couple of years.
We haven't raised the premiums either to what they expected us to do.
What, may I ask a question? When you say the wrong side, what are you saying? What exactly is the wrong side?
We have financially gotten the advantage over what they had predicted. So it's been a benefit to Kusuth County, but they under like the, which column is it?
Did you look at column AP by any chance?
There's.
An A, AO. That'll tell you.
So we were over.
The percent of our, our actual claims as expended of the expected.
How about column V is the Wellmark claims actual, W is the percent of expected?
I'm sorry, which column?
W on the left side of the expenditures. Percent of expected in twenty-two, twenty-three, we were at a hundred and eighty percent of expected. So we were higher than their projections.
That that column there, there's actual claims and then you take into your stop loss and you'll see where the stop loss takes in. For example, if you go back to the sheet. This sheet here that I handed out showing the balance, you can see that the Wellmark claim was so much, there's administrative fees and then how much stop loss reimbursed, so you gotta look at your, your cost and not necessarily the claims. Because the cl- the healthcare claims are so much, but you're paying for your stop loss, so that's how much stop loss is being there.
What is column X?
And, and it's, it's a.
That doesn't pan for pretty scenario.
It, you know, again, looking at some of the past, we've gotta look into the future and look at what the dad has been giving to us.
Well, and that's where I not to beat a dead horse, but the, the difference if we had changed to fifty thousand dollar stop loss, we would have paid an additional thirty thousand if the scenario had actually played out. So we got the better of the insurance company in that.
Getting to my point, thirty thousand and a whole year of insurance out of millions of dollars doesn't mean jack shit.
Thirty thousand dollars though.
It doesn't move the needle.
It's.
You're arguing over something that has no bearing on what the rate's going to be.
But that's why I'm asking for other options because that would, could affect things substantially. Is it, is there any other scenarios you guys would like to look at while Doug is communicating with Wellmark? Or are you satisfied with the ones that we have in addition to what I'm asking for?
I'm good with those.
Do you have any other scenarios you'd like to look at, Roger?
No.
Okay, then I guess for the sake of time and conversation, I don't I don't know if we have a lot more to hit on, on this topic until we till we get some more numbers back from that, so.
So when we go back to the budget, we know nothing about what we're gonna do then.
How can you have an answer?
That's just what I said, if we go back to the budget, we have no way of knowing where we're going with anything else in the budget until we really get a handle on what we're gonna do with insurance. It's, it's a two thousand pound elephant in this room right now.
That's why I think it'd be good if we could get answers back as soon as possible. Doug, would you be able to send that stuff to him, those scenarios and see?
I would, I'd my office to do that, I am.
Would appreciate it.
I'm planning on doing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Doug.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone have any other thoughts or comments, questions before we leave the health insurance topic? Okay.
Is, I'll go ahead and ask, is the board thinking about having employees contribute to the to the fund?
It's an option. I'm open to discussion of it.
I think it's, I mean, I don't know.
Been discussed in order?
The possibility.
What, what possibilities have been discussed?
Nothing in specific, just we don't know where the numbers will come in yet.
Just wondering, I guess, what's been discussed?
It's just been brought up, there's never been a number discussed, there's never been, it's just the possibility of having employee contribution to it.
Okay, thank you.
No. Okay.
I think you should ask people out there if they have any points that they would like with insurance because it affects their life.
I, I just opened it up right before Doug's question, if anyone had anything to say.
Okay, my situation would just hire the most new people. Wages are based on benefits the county has, which are very good. To retain employees, if we, if we go into a contribution or to go to a higher number, we're gonna have to adjust on their salary side. So in my, in my reality, it's gonna come from here, it's gonna come from here, to get the same number to be there, so. Like you said, we have good employees, we're gonna retain them. There's an extent to that. I agree with that, so. And even change your deductibles. Your administrative costs at Wellmark is gonna remain the same because there's still processing, the same number of claims, the same number of dollars. You're not gonna save anything on administrative side, I could be wrong if that's how I, I'd see it. You may save someone a premium cost, but then you're gonna have to expense the employees, reimburse that money, so.
I mean.
We, I guess, just Phil, I, I'll go ahead and answer that question if it's okay, but they did give us a projection and there would be uh some cost savings. Right around a hundred thousand dollars.
In administrative costs?
Yeah, well, my.
Because there's still processes in the same number of claims.
The annual costs, I'm talking about. So, and, and I don't know, to be honest with you. The administrative costs go down from two million eleven thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars to th- two million nine thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars. The administrative costs go down from two million eleven thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars to two thou- two million nine thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars. So. So, what's your definition of a of an increase, decrease?
So we have to have in having a employee to manage that.
Depending on what's going on, yeah.
But you guys are all department heads, what's more important, your employees to have a raise or to have insurance, you know? I mean, which is more important to them in the end?
Insurance.
If we give them a.
Depends on the age of the employee.
It depends.
The young ones, yeah.
They don't care.
They don't care.
I'll say, and Donna, if you wanna, you've been in on some of my exit interviews with employees. Tammy, I think you or Melissa have, but one comment, when you ask about whether compensation. Is fair and whether the benefits are fair, they. They overwhelmingly, I don't know what the percentage is, but they they do say they appreciate the benefits. Especially the people that retired. Would you disagree with that statement?
Even last week, one of our individuals that's been gone here was still very happy with our our coverage. And I think the only ones I've talked to, and they're probably the seventy-two below, they're they're not as fearful of the deductible. Like the change in deductible, but there's some definite pause when you think about increasing the contributions. Just because that that takes from one or the other, I mean, it's not a question, you want raises or insurance, you want both.
You want both, I get that, but I mean, what you're doing.
But but they think they could, you know, the the deductible is an unknown, but at least it's not an every month deduction.
I agree, after talking with my employees, you know, of course, nobody wants the deductible to increase. But if they had to choose between a higher deductible and paying out of pocket, they'd choose the higher deductible.
To an extent.
Yeah, but if you start paying the difference between single and family twelve hundred dollars a month, that that adds up too.
If we can get some more numbers, we'll come back to this topic. Thank you.
Are we gonna talk about lunch after here?
You guys wanna start anywhere in particular, provide your conversations?
Where did we leave off with yesterday?
Oh, actually, attorney was about where we left on, wasn't it?
Oh, well, we kinda got through that, but we didn't give much pass.
So you're not gonna do lunch after me?
I think we do need to talk that, but I don't. I don't know if does anyone have numbers or anything in mind, cause I I was gonna ask for a few numbers today for that, but.
On longevity?
Yeah.
We we've got nothing doing right now, except the what we have now and. You have a breakdown on the age of all the employees that have been here.
How long everybody's been here?
Yeah, so that we know we can actually compile what it's gonna cost.
That that's that's one of the numbers I was gonna ask for.
We could get it.
Well, I think before we talk about longevity, we'll have we have to have that then.
Well, I would have appreciated knowing that Tuesday.
Yeah. I don't think you can do it until we have something to go by.
Yeah.
I mean, I, you're just shooting at the hard rock with nothing.
At that point, I mean.
Well, and we don't, we don't know overall on anything with health insurance too, so I.
Right.
I don't, I don't know that we can throw a. Solid answer at that.
Sorry, guys.
You're gonna call us if you want us to call your friend.
Yeah.
You still want us today, even with all the unknowns?
Yeah, I mean.
Asking for a friend.
Don't don't know what the day will bring.
You don't know what the day will bring, okay.
Well, I I don't think we can do much to really know what insurance is gonna be, cause that's.
I mean, as far as the rest of us departments falling into line, you don't really have a base for where you wanna go off of.
I don't think anybody's budgets have really changed other than what we need to figure. Insurance figured out before we can move in.
Cause we're we're looking at a four hundred dollar a month increase in premiums on family plan. Then two hundred on a single.
All right.
And if we're gonna keep it under the three. We're gonna have to do some really creative accounting.
Each employee broke down how many years of service.
Potentially, yeah, however, I don't know.
Ain't gonna be any fun, but that's where we're at.
So we know totals.
Okay, well, just asking.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You guys all saw Carter's email, I'm guessing?
Yeah.
But not yet.
Pull it up if you want it. Um, he sent a couple late last night, I just opened up this morning here.
He sent more than what was this morning?
He sent two emails last night. One of the things he mentioned um in his second email was. Possibility of reducing the compensation board's recommendations further if the rest of us are discussing doing so. I've had that thought as well, I mean, I made motion for fifty percent reduction out of the gate, but I. I wouldn't be for everybody, oh.
Even the sheriff?
Well, when when Tammy gets back, we'll handle that with a motion.
Well, I don't know what else we're we're, we're gonna have to stay underneath the state's recommendation.
Yeah.
There's cuts coming, what are you gonna do?
Um, I just read off part of Carter's email here, um, for. The budget planning and stuff, I would make a motion to reduce the compensation board's recommendation. To zero percent across the board for everyone.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time, please, Kyle?
Yep, to reduce the compensation board's recommendation for all elected officials to zero percent.
We're all elected officials?
Yep.
To zero percent?
Yep.
So not reduced by zero, reduce to zero?
To zero.
Okay, gotcha, just to clarify.
Yep. Roger, did you wanna second that, you said that as well, otherwise I'd entertain a second.
Yeah, I'll I'll second it, huh?
Okay.
I don't know what else we can do, I think our hands are tied.
Yep.
I don't know what Tammy, you, I I was just trying to figure out.
Roger said you had a second.
Increase something healthcare.
Um.
Hundred thirty.
Let me, I could call Carter so he could be, I mean, I read his email, but let me see if he's available quick.
Fuzzy math, seven hundred thousand increase in healthcare premiums minimum. Um, that's, Tammy, where does that come at, if we add seven hundred thousand to our budget?
My health insurance is gonna come out in general.
Hey Carter, are you able to talk here for a couple minutes?
Um, yeah, that's fine. I'm gonna do Kansas City here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so just we we talked health insurance for a while and then um. I had requested Doug get a couple other scenarios from Walmart and then we kinda rolled into general conversation here about the budget. Um, we all got your email and stuff, so I read off the second email you had sent. Um, the last part about the compensation board's recommendation.
Yep.
I made a motion, which Roger seconded, to do zero percent across the board. So thought I would see if you wanted to share anything further, any thoughts that way, otherwise. Um, you could participate in the vote here if you would like.
Oh, you're in the middle of the vote now?
Well, we just made the motion, we're in the middle of discussion.
Oh, okay, okay, so, but you haven't voted yet?
We have not voted yet, it's just open period for discussion right now.
And you made a motion for zero percent with Roger second?
Correct, across the board, yep. Um.
Uh, I would support that.
Okay, um, is there any comments you would like to share outside of your email? Otherwise, um, before we got you on the phone, Josh said he was supportive of that as well. So that's why we've made the motion to put it in, put it in the record, so to speak, um.
Okay, um, no, I don't have any other comments on that, no.
Okay, Roger, you have something?
Expound on that, what are you gonna do with deputies there, you are gonna move the deputies up to zero percent and include them or not?
Yeah, if the elected officials don't get, oh, you mean, you mean sheriff's office deputies.
Changing the deputies.
No, you're talking, you're talking deputies under elected officials, right?
Right. So the ones that are at eighty now, are you moving them up to eighty-five?
That can be separate.
That's up to conversation, we we've already had some of those conversations, but um. This motion is for the compensation board's recommendation only, it's not.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify, I'm not making.
Fair question.
So it's clear.
Yep, yep, this does not affect that that situation.
Thank you.
Deputy status?
Correct, um, for the um positions, the deputies we have talked about previously. Where um they've been asked to move up percentage, um.
Yep.
That would not affect those, that's a separate conversation.
And it wouldn't affect the deputies in the auditor's office or in uh.
Treasure.
Treasures.
Correct, they would get the, this is for the elected official compensation schedule only.
Correct.
But they would be impacted by that zero percent, but not the change in percentage is different.
Just make it clear.
Yep, yep, um, nothing wrong with asking the question, that's fine. Um, anything further before we vote for discussion or comments?
Well, my comment's gonna be, I think if every individual's gonna get a five thousand dollar a year.
Increasing benefit?
Increasing benefits in insurance. And that's a substantial number, but we'll.
When we get done, we'll visit it again, but I'm.
Okay, well, hearing no new further discussion, uh, roll call vote please.
Jerks.
Yes.
Whacker.
Yes.
Nah.
Carter?
Carter.
Vote.
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes, motion carried unanimous for zero. Um, and then.
Sorry, I can't hear everything.
Yep, no worries, I have you on speaker, but I'm sure it's still hard since we're spread out here.
Well, and it's it's raining here and.
Well, my, we can let you go to focus on the road, is there anything outside your emails you wanted to touch on quick? Or, I mean, you laid it out in your emails, so I don't know, just open open door here for you, if you got anything you wanna say.
Uh, no, I guess I I just shared my thoughts there, I, as I mentioned with the wages, I like what Roger's idea was the past week. It was even dollar amounts uh versus percentages for different departments, so.
Yep.
Um, other than that, no, I I I think I laid it out fairly clear, if you got any other questions, you can call.
Sounds good, I don't have any questions with this email, Roger, Josh, you had any questions? Okay, um, well, thank you and um, drive safe, safe travels, all that. If we know more on health insurance or get some stuff back, we can let you know, so.
Sound good.
Thanks, have a good one, bye.
Yep, thanks, bye.
Okay, um. So. We we had our conversation with the county attorney, I don't know that we decided a whole lot because of. Health insurance and the other things that were looming out, um, GIS, General Systems, HR. Um, Cassoot Waste Management Recorder and Engineer are all the ones that we did not get to. At cross off auditor, we touched on yours quick, but I didn't know if you had anything further, um. Otherwise. I guess, anyone have a thought on anything they wanna touch, or we could. We could either call in departments or um.
Honestly, there's really not much we can do for each of the departments, we don't know what we're doing for insurance or wages.
Okay, Doug just sent off an email to Michelle, it looks like, um. Carter has a couple things in regards to engineers' budget here, um, we probably could discuss. The last one is in regard to mechanic's wage, we postponed the conversation about. Um, adding the Christmas Eve holiday on Tuesday because of that discussion. Does anyone have any thoughts on mechanic's wage?
It's gonna be on on agenda Tuesday.
Um. I'll I'll talk to you after, we're gonna hear.
That's what Carter said, to have them both on the agenda at the same time.
Are they separate agenda items, or how do you have them listed right now?
Separate, but to do it both at the same time.
Okay, um. Probably should just be one item for the collective bargaining agreement, because that's really what it is. It's two two topics within that, but um, it's one agreement, so. I can talk to you on that too, um.
You you might kind of hold on to two agree, two issues together.
That's, yeah, and that's what he said when we talked to Renee, they should be in a package.
What if you don't agree?
Well, you two are issues, you can make a motion to agree with one part, but not another part.
Yeah, if if you.
Spelled out in in the motion, whoever makes that motion.
If you have the agenda item as discussion on the collect, like this last one. The last agenda was worded specific to add the Christmas holiday to the secondary road collective bargaining unit agreement. If you just have discussion decision, secondary road collective bargaining unit agreement, um, you could make any changes. Within that topic.
I guess my concern is that every year we go over the holidays. And every year you vote on the holidays, but if you put another one in the collective bargaining unit. And then you are not voting on that every year, it'll be.
No, the res- the resolution Doug prepared was a one-time deal, so I mean, that's.
For just this year.
That's regardless.
Twenty twenty-four.
In the bargaining unit, you're gonna open it up just for the one year for a half a day holiday?
That's what Doug had prepared in the resolution.
It's a whole day.
Whole day.
Be more than what was normal?
But I mean, I have, I've looked around at other, um. Whether it be. Private places with mechanics wages and other comparable positions, I I do think we. Private places with mechanic's wages and other comparable positions, I, I do think we are under the market. Um, we've had one open position for. Two plus, maybe three years, don't remember the exact timeframe, but. I, I guess as a board, I think we need to take, take steps to. Show that that's a higher priority, it's costing us a lot of money in outside labor right now. And to do our due diligence to the taxpayers, I guess. You could put it two ways, I think we either need to have a mechanic shop that functions with mechanics, or not have one at all. I'm not recommending that, but I think we need to. Kick it in road gear and get something accomplished, and I don't even know that thirty-four to thirty-five dollar an hour. That Carter put in his email is, is guaranteed to get us people, but I think it shows an effort. Josh?
I, I'm not arguing with you, but then I go back, you give one person in a department a big raise.
It's not one person.
County workers.
It's not one person.
Two people that are there right now.
It should be four.
That's debatable.
That's what we have advertised for two open positions.
I know.
And.
When you start increasing wages, you don't do it across the board, you're asking for a lot of headaches.
They're not the same job.
I don't care, you should don't ask them for headaches.
That's.
You just want employees that get longevity, you don't want employees that are deputies or elected officials.
What?
Elected officials and deputies in the departments do not get longevity, do you want them listed or not?
Oh, for their years?
Yes.
Um, no, if they, if they would, if they would not apply to that, then no.
These will not get longevity, because they're based on a different formula, correct?
They, they wouldn't, wouldn't apply to the equation, so, no, thank you for asking.
Next.
Correct, yeah, I mean, if we, if we make a change to longevity, it wouldn't affect their pay, so their years wouldn't, wouldn't impact the discussion. Josh, you have any thoughts on mechanic side things?
Kind of in the middle, you know, I know i- if we increased the mechanics, you know, we may have issues with other people saying, well, why aren't you? Giving us that much of an increase, but we also need to do something to. Get mechanics, uh, because we are paying more for outside labor versus what we would be paying for. Our own mechanics to do the work, now that's not saying that we're gonna eliminate all the outside labor, we will still have certain things that will need to be. Taken care of outside, but, um, having the mechanics would save taxpayer dollars and. I think we need to do it, it's, it's going to be a difficult. Conversation with the other members in, in secondary roads and. In that apartment area, but I think it needs to happen to make the county. Competitive in wages.
I, I agree with you more if the equipment that we're buying now didn't have firework tights. Computer systems and only caterpillar, only John Deere and only. The companies could fix, so, so are we gonna save as much as you think?
I, yeah, I, I think we will.
Uh, general maintenance stuff, we would be able to do in our, there is gonna be specialty items that will have to be done outside labor. There, I mean, that's.
But general maintenance, most of that should be done by the person operating the machine, they should be changing the oil, fixing the tires. It shouldn't come to the mechanic shop.
Well, how much of that is getting done right now?
Well, they're doing quite a bit of it. They're not bringing oil, their truck in to get the oil changed, then they're not bringing their caterpillar in, they, they do an oil test. They send the tests in, and I'm not sure we get a big benefit out of that either.
No, but I mean, general maintenance, when, when we've had.
I'm gonna say that.
Open for.
We have spoiled some of the road workers, they should be changing some of the hoses that break, because it's not rocket science to put a new hydraulic hose on. Some of those things that we. They should be doing themselves.
However, we do have backup trucks for that reason that when.
Well, not right now, we would, I don't, I don't think we have spares right now, do we?
I do in El Dorado.
One?
Sitting there, yeah, if not two, I don't know if they're in that old shed at the state.
I think, I think we were going to with the new ones, but I don't, I don't think they're on the road yet. To my knowledge, there are six new trucks, I don't think any of them have hit the road.
There's gonna be spares kept out of it.
I, I knew there was gonna be spares out of that, but I don't think they're functional yet.
But there's other necessary repairs that would need to be made, that do not need to be done at a specialty shop, that the mechanics. Shop would be able to handle if we were fully staffed in that area, and to get fully staffed, we need to be competitive.
Well, and, and the other piece of this, I mean, if we're talking longevity, if we make changes to longevity, that. That really probably should be in. In the changes that we do at the same time for the secondary road unit two, so everyone would get a benefit in that regard. For their years of service, and that's one reason, I mean. I, I don't think there was a motion or a date specific in the motion last week to table it, we might need to put that off for. A longer period of time until we decide what we're doing with longevity, because otherwise, we're gonna come back to the same point. And we're gonna have to have another resolution, and we're gonna have to have another proposal to them, and. We might as well do that all at once, if we're gonna change longevity. I, I guess my intent would be that would apply to everyone that currently gets longevity. Which the road workers do. So if we make a change to longevity, we probably should have the holiday and. Discussion on the mechanic's wage acted on at that same time.
Is that something that we need to plan and have the representatives here for?
For the collective bargaining units? Um, I don't, I don't think they have to be here, um, we have to send, we have to send the proposal to their.
They have to okay it.
There's, there's a process there, and they, they can either okay it, or they could reject it or whatever, but. If we throw it all together in a package.
I think they got, I'd like to steward, don't they, the road worker?
I think the representative or whatever, yeah.
They should be in some of the negotiation, they're at least being informed as it goes.
I think that's when we send the proposal to their, um. Union rep or whatever, I think. You got any thoughts on mechanic's wage, Roger?
I don't know what good it's gonna do, to be honest. I have a hard time increasing the mechanic's wages, and you're not, what are you gonna do with everybody else?
To be decided yet. But their, their agreement was four percent.
Yeah, I like to be consistent.
I don't, I don't think you have a close enough similarity in job to be consistent there. We, we don't have, I mean, look at the, look at all the new employees we've hired for equipment operators. In the last couple of years.
And we need more?
We have one open position right now.
Don't we have two?
To my knowledge, one, in Lakota. Um, and we've had several new hires in the last two and three years where. We have not had a single hire for a mechanic in a lot, in that time period, it's, it's not the same job. If someone who's an equipment operator now wants to be a mechanic, they can apply for that position, if they are.
Yeah, my.
Qualified.
That's.
It's.
My problem with mechanics is if you get a bad one, it costs you a lot more money than if you don't have one at all.
Well, it does, and that's.
That's really scares me, because you're.
Kind of falls down to.
But you're not gonna get a good one with a low, low wage, I mean, I've heard someone say the. Saying you pay peanuts, you're gonna get monkeys.
Yeah, I don't know.
You're, you're not gonna get the best of the best at thirty-five dollars an hour either, you're hopefully going to get someone who's.
You know what Cap pays in Mason?
They're higher than that.
You're a pos.
Yes.
How about John Deere, you know, they get paid?
They're at or above that.
I know most of them get paid.
I, I know enough that, yeah, and they also have the opportunity for overtime.
So they don't have near the benefit, that agent they're paying them out some shares.
True, there are other benefits here, but. But at the end of the day, if. You have to have a strong motivating factor to get someone to leave a job for less take-home pay.
The only reason somebody would leave John Deere International or any of them places to come work through the county would be to get a forty-hour. Work week instead of a fifty, because most of them are working Saturdays.
And.
A lot of overtime.
Fridays off in the summer.
And a lot, a lot of overtime.
And, and some people want more of a work-life balance, or so to speak, so there are, there are incentives that we can sell. But I think we're so far out of the equation right now, we're, we're not, we're not getting where we need to go.
What was Carter's other email?
That was the first one, the second one was about wage suggestion.
Yeah, no, I didn't get that one.
You should have it, they were about three minutes apart.
Yeah, but I don't mean the same, though, I like to get the emails.
Do you want me to forward it to you?
No, I'm sorry, what did you say?
It was, well, he said it on the phone too, he said he was. Most in favor of giving an even dollar amount within each department or position, as you had suggested last week. Resulting in a larger percentage for lesser paid employees and smaller percentage for higher paid employees. Um, then he had the stuff about also consider reducing the compensation board's recommendation further. If we're discussing that.
Okay.
And that was the end of that email.
I'm gonna create my iPad in.
I had plenty of issues with mine before.
Cause I just got one that. Which one was that? U S Census Bureau, Luke got it three weeks ago and I got it. Just now, no.
Oh, I got, I got it, how long ago?
Yeah, no big deal, I just, I just get a kick out of it, I don't know how it can float out there in space for that long.
Census email, maybe I asked Luke about it, I don't remember, talked to someone.
So what are we gonna do today? Other than sit here, we have to do something.
Well.
Or give up?
Um, we can talk on stuff in the engineer's budget, there's.
You gotta have him here for it.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can call him back.
But he's alone in his office today, so.
Yeah, and he's alone in his office, he isn't.
Well.
Getting quite fair to him.
I guess.
Our candy, she, you're short one person already, and then to have somebody sit down there makes it even worse.
I don't think she minds, as long as you're doing constructive stuff with him, you know, I mean, I wouldn't wanna, you know. Just waste time.
Yeah, I guess just, the big elephant in that budget is the requested increase of over a million dollars in taxes. Um. I, I have no interest in supporting that, I guess. We can talk on that with or without him here right now, um, I think we need to make some changes, um.
Can we take a break for like five minutes if we're gonna keep on?
Sure, can.
I have to use the restroom.
Yep, that's fine.
January fifth budget workshop? Which one are we gonna be in?
Um.
January third, right?
We're one twenty-five today.
I need to get that.
He's looking for the machines that you're talking about.
Yeah.
It is possibly in the third.
Secondary road, come on. Expense, there I got it.
I'll go grab some water quick while everyone else is.
I am.
A little faster.
As long as we got a break.
Oh, perfect.
Is that our longevity?
Longevity, yeah.
How Roger says it.
Never heard it pronounced like that before, but that's what he says every time.
Yeah.
And remember, they only get it if they've reached five years, ten years, fifteen years. If they only have less than five, they don't have it.
We got several at one. One and zero, three, two.
Who has been here the longest?
Well, they won't be on there probably because they might be an elected official or a deputy, so.
Dale Colash, forty-two.
Yeah, he is probably.
He'd be up there. He's probably not far off from being the longest.
Longest non-elected, non-deputy. Ron's up there thirty years. And things that buy one in your food ingredient.
Yeah, I've had them. I've had them before.
Does that mean it doesn't expire ever?
Probably not.
Midnight starts slow. Twenty of February. Then Tammy comes in here with pickle wraps. Is that on the strawberry fruitcake?
I don't know, it's Deb's birthday today.
Oh, is her birthday?
Deb's.
Oh. I'll have to tell her happy birthday on later today.
Yes, Tammy, I'm coming in this morning.
Thank you.
Boy, Texas is making some headlines.
What?
Have you not heard?
The border stuff? I've seen some.
Federal court rules to cut down the fence and Texas goes, no, we're gonna put more up.
Don't they have the National Guard blocking certain areas?
The National Guard relieve, Border Patrol.
If they keep it up, we might be in for a world of fun.
He apparently made a proclamation yesterday that, um, they are not following.
Texas did?
Yeah.
Not following the court order?
Well, they're not following the requests of an unconstitutional president or something, something to that extent. I can't remember exactly what it was, but.
Was it the ruling from the Supreme Court?
Believe so. Texas might be its own country before the end of twenty twenty-four.
Never know.
We're thinking about going there in the case, and I'm kinda glad we didn't just cause I don't wanna be in the middle of anything.
Tammy's in here.
All right. You ready, Roger?
Yeah.
Tammy passed out a sheet for years of service for longevity.
You gonna do this first?
We can do whatever. If, if Doug's ready and able to come up.
Doug was outside wondering, you wanna go grab him?
I can.
I didn't know we had anybody that had their name hyphenated. Nancy.
Oh, I, she doesn't list it that way. She must just have that for official reasons or something.
It's the first time I've seen it that way.
I don't know.
Well, Dale Colash, he came here out of grade school.
Yeah.
What's Linda's student?
She's a jailer.
She's a jailer?
Well, there's two Linda's suitors, so.
I'm thinking of the wrong one.
Probably. If you're thinking of Ron, Ron's sister, that's the wrong one.
Okay, yeah. Billy Willie. I think she should have thought longer before marrying Willie. First name was Billy. And you don't count anymore? They take your name off of it because you're elected then?
Yeah, I don't get longevity, neither do my deputies. I was maxed out before, so.
How many years were you over there?
Twenty-one.
That's what I thought. I didn't know it was a quarter mile.
I'll be twenty-five here this summer in total.
I got my steps and going around the courthouse. I found him.
Not good for your diabetes. Too much wheat, not good. Simple sugars.
If you guys are gonna register for statewide supervisors meeting, if that registration closes today.
Pretty sure I'm already registered for that one.
I get, get a kick because it says vegetable on there, so it shouldn't be healthy to eat. Whole grain wheat flour. Yeah. Problem is, Dr. Bowlock took the wheat and hydrogenized it and took all the good stuff out of the wheat. Now it just makes sugar. The old wheat was tall, full, full of essential vitamins and minerals, and now it has nothing but sugars. But he got all kinds of awards for doing it. I'm just trying to think what he got for doing that. Norman Bowlock, you remember him?
Mm-hmm. On the Nobel Peace Pepper Prize.
I think he got Nobel Prize for it.
Yeah. Yeah, I went, I did a project and was at a conference in Des Moines for World Food Prize and, yeah, that was.
Back in the sixties?
I don't remember the date for that, but the conference was back when I was in high school. I don't remember all that, but I know I went down there once or twice. And yeah, I'm pretty sure he got a Nobel Peace Prize for that one. All right, Doug, anywhere in particular you'd like to start?
Oh, well, we can start with planning and zoning, I guess.
Okay.
I don't know if the beforehand questions.
Um, that one, we'd gotten into a little bit of conversation the other day briefly before, um, we got into health insurance, I believe. And we had, let me, I'll get flipped my page before I get talking too much.